Vice Mayor Ray, you look like you're ready, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Should I do the 10-second warning?
We are ready, Mayor.
Okay.
Now a good time?
Hold just a second, let me call the meeting to order. Get my stretching here. We've got everybody in front here. Okay, three, two, one. Welcome to the September 10th, 2015 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I officially call the meeting to order. We will begin by asking Vice Mayor Ray to introduce our scout who will lead us in the pledge and then other scouts, please.
Mayor, we're gonna have Jack lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I'm gonna quickly pass the microphone down. We should be done by about 8:30. And at the same time, Councilmember Daniels will be passing out a copy of the Constitution for each one of the scouts to take home. So scouts, if you'd say your name and your rank.
(inaudible)
Corbin, 11-year-old scout.
Spencer Jones, 11-year-old.
Ray Thompson, 11-year-old.
Juan, 11-year-old.
Jaden Holmick, tenderfoot.
Benton Crowser, first class.
Hayden Johnson, tenderfoot.
Aiden Culverhouse, 10.
Cooper Brown, Weebo.
This is Tanner Trejo, and he's a Weebo.
Luke Zimmerman, Weebo.
Riley Zimmerman, Weebo.
Drayton Lance, Weebo.
Jacob Johnson, Weebo.
Tyler Vecnan, Weebo.
Spencer Scott, Weebo.
Logan Moss, Weebo.
Jack Berkey, Star.
Christian Betts, tenderfoot.
John Stevens, first class.
Weston Jones, first class.
Matt Vaughn, first class.
Jaden Brady, first class.
Andrew Tushir, tenderfoot.
Nathan Grandy, tenderfoot.
Trevor Treo, I'm a scout.
Ian Groschon, scout.
Sumner Burningham, scout.
Corbin Johnson, Star.
Bryant Sanders, 11-year-old.
Corbin Hall, first class.
Noah Reed, Life.
Thank you to the scouts. Mayor, you have half the scouts in Gilbert here. Anything you want to tell them?
Be prepared.
Perfect. And then, of course, with Constitution Week this coming up, we have two Wednesday nights of Mayor Badges, each one of the three Citizenship Mayor Badges, along with American Heritage. So, talk to your leaders if you need those, and we all know the Citizenship ones are tough to get sometimes. Talk to your leaders about signing up for that. A great way to get those done, two of them done each of the nights. With that, we'll go ahead and dismiss them to sit back with their troops, and thanks for coming so much today, guys.
Thank you. We'll invite Dr. Thor Strainhold, who's the Associate Pastor at the Valor Christian Center, to come forward and offer the invocation. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Dr. Strainhold, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and all who are in attendance here tonight. On behalf of Valor Christian Center, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and ask God's blessings upon this meeting tonight. Shall we bow our heads and pray? Father God, I thank you for your wisdom and your direction in all the decisions in the proceedings that are taking place here tonight. Thank you, Lord, for all that is done in one mind and in one accord. And I thank you, Lord, for the peace that passes all understanding upon each one here tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our clerk's office will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Aquorum is present.
Thank you. We will proceed now with our presentations, proclamations. Item number one, Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. I'm excited to present this. Barb, would you and the committee from Constitution Week come forward here to receive the proclamation? So, all of you scouts that are gonna participate in Scout Night coming up, here's the magic behind Scout Night in Constitution Week. These two ladies move heaven and earth to pull off one of the largest Scout Night activities, the scouting activities, in the whole state of Arizona. So, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and talk a little bit about the spirit and why we're doing this. We're gonna get into the nuts and bolts, and those are on the slide right now. So Barb, would you mind introducing yourself? And Bev here?
I'm Barbara Stoll, and I'm the Constitution Week Committee Chairman. And this is Bev Bentley, and she is my right-hand person for Constitution Week. We started Constitution Week about 14 years ago, under the direction of Mayor John Lewis. And we just got some fabulous events. And out of one small event, we've turned this into quite a few events, and we hope all of you will take notice to that and attend some of these events. Like Councilmember Taylor just said, we've got Scout Night coming up, and thank you, Jordan Ray, for advertising that. You'll need to register online for that, so we have an idea of how many scouts will be participating. And there you can receive your Nation, World, and Community Merit Badges, and you get one for each night. So we have two Scout Nights, the 16th and the 23rd. Do you want to talk a little bit about? I'll tell you one more event, and then I'll let Bev Bentley talk to you about the Constitution Fair, which is the big family event coming up next Saturday. Next Thursday is our One Nation Under God event, and it's just gonna be a fabulous event with different religious leaders there, talking about restoring God in America and coming together as a community with all different faiths and religions, and how we can just make our community such a better place and work together. So we hope you guys would bring your parents and come to that. Three different speakers, all different religious faiths, and some original patriotic music that will be shared that night. On the 19th, which is a week from Saturday, we have what probably most of the youth here have heard of, is our Constitution Fair. That's a celebration, it's kind of a culmination of everything that we've been teaching throughout the previous week. When we started this, we started it with the thought in mind that we wanted to educate the youth coming up and help everybody to learn the importance of the Constitution in our lives and keep patriotism alive. And so the fair is kind of a culmination, after we do the Merit Badge Clinics and go into the schools and talk as religious leaders in the community. The fair is where we kind of have a party night with a lot of learning at the fair. There are different booths where you can learn a lot of things about patriotism and the Constitution. We have a great military section set up, including an area where we have a large banner and picture of every fallen soldier since 9/11 from this area. That's really a neat area. The military brings the Charlie Chopper and other military equipment that you can look at and see. We also have a large performance of a lot of patriotic events, a lot of food and fun and live enactments, and a lot of people dressed up in first-person that you can go around and collect collector's cards from. We are excited about it, and we hope you'll come and join us for the event. Oh, and we end in a great fireworks display, and you don't want to miss that one.
Barb and Bev, thank you very much. And to remind you of all the details there, we have that on the screen here, you can take note, look at that later. But I'm pleased to present this proclamation here, and let me just read a few of the lines. "The Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas society benefits from a greater understanding of the Constitution as part of our great national heritage and foundation for our government. Now therefore, I, John Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23, 2015, as Constitution Week. And in Gilbert, urge all citizens to study the Constitution, reflect on the privileges of being an American, with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves." Can you give a big hand to Barb and Bev for this wonderful organization? We have a short promo video here, and then, Mayor, if you have any final invitations or challenges after the video. Kurt?
and to our great organize, thank you. The Boy Scouts are actively involved, and I also want, we probably have 500 to 600, 900 volunteers, or hundreds of volunteers, and many of the Boy Scouts, and so as a community, this is a very engaged event, one of the finest family events we can have, and has been noted as the largest celebration of the Constitution in the entire country. So if you haven't come, we invite you to come. But now, I give the microphone to Councilmember Peterson. Some of you are here because you are famous Gilbert readers. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item on our agenda is about the summer reading program from Maricopa County Libraries. And we have some cool stats to share with you, that total Gilbert school minutes read this summer were 1,196,646. The top school was the Neely Traditional Academy, with 76,845 points, and the total minutes read in Gilbert were 3,457,153. I think you all deserve a big round of applause for that and all the reading. I'd like to bring down Jeremy Reader, who's the Deputy Director of the Maricopa County Library District, and he's gonna help me pass out some certificates from some people in the audience here tonight.
Okay, very quickly, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just wanted to say, we had a very successful program this year, and Gilbert, as you just heard, did tremendous, fantastic job with reading. Our goal, of course, is to get more families to read, 20 minutes a day is what we shoot for, and another goal we have is to prevent, for students in the summertime, what the educators call the "summer slide" between schooling, when kids typically lose a little bit of that. And we, this year, was the first year we were able to promote pre- and post-testing to prove that, in fact, our program does work in preventing the summer slide. So we're really excited about our program. Next year is gonna be even larger, and we've got a fun game online, people, kids can use to play, and so we're very excited. But one more round of applause, I think, for the Gilbert readers today. Thank you.
So I'm gonna call your names, and I'm gonna ask you to come down and get your certificate from Jeremy, and we'll ask you to stay down here at the front until the end, when we can get a picture of everybody together, please. So first, I have Benjamin Garak. And Logan Brandon. And after Logan, we'll have Joyce Tong. I love your purple dress. This is Joyce. Thank you, Mayor. I have Jonah Chaco. Should we do a photo with each group, or do you want to do a total? Because it's a big, it's a big group, yeah. Could we do a group photo, please?
Bridgette, you have one more family coming down. As much as I maybe shouldn't be taking photo ops. It's really not my thing.
I just thought I would let the little ones go back and sit down, it would make it a little bit easier. All of the photos will be available on our Gilbert Facebook page this evening, that's Gilbert Town Hall, Facebook, Gilbert Town Hall, so you can go out and look for those. They'll all be posted there later this evening. Our next group is the Kids Group, that's Dax Mitchell. And Mandy Lee. Come on down. And Ashley Barry. And Christian Beckstead. And just so everybody knows, the cards that they're getting are cards to Raising Canes, they're a sponsor of the program, and so Jeremy's been passing cards out to the kids along with their certificates. Next, we have the Teens Group. I have Chandler Lee. And Ben Rusev. Tatiana Rusev. And Elijah Rusev. Judith Combs. And Veraj Pandit. And Howard Rainwasser. Thank you for your participation in the program, and like we said, the program has gone through the roof this year. This past summer saw 77,880 total signups in Maricopa County, just Maricopa County in Arizona. Gilbert's libraries are some of the most popular, with 5,300 signups at the Southeast Regional Library, and 2,079 signups at the Perry Branch Library, for a total of 7,379. Give yourselves all a big round of applause. Thank you for coming tonight, and we look forward to seeing you next summer.
Thank you. This is not noted on the agenda, but at the end of our meeting, the mayor gets to make additional announcements, and so I'll do this now. Tomorrow, we invite the community to a 9/11 Remembrance Event. It will take place at 7 o'clock, right outside of this building, at our 9/11 Memorial. It's not lengthy, it's about 30 minutes in length, but it is one of those occasions where we get to reflect and express appreciation for our public safety leaders and individuals involved in protecting us, and all those, also in the military and our veterans. So I invite you to come to that tomorrow night, the 9/11 Remembrance Event.
PM.
PM. Thank you. 7:00 PM. We will continue on the agenda. Next is the Communication from Citizens, and as the agenda says, that members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Ray, what request do we have tonight?
Mayor, we have one request from Tiffany Warner.
Thank you. Under your direction, please.
Tiffany, we'll invite you up to the podium. If you would state your name and whether or not you are a Gilbert resident, and then you'll have three minutes. You'll notice there's some lights up there on the left-hand side of the podium, and when it turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds left, and then when it's red, that means the three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name's Tiffany Warner, and yes, I've been a Gilbert resident since, let's see, June of 2000. And I just wanted to address the council, it was really amazing to hear all these awards and the things that these young people are doing. I have a daughter who will be 20 next month, and a son who will be five, so I have a son that's getting ready to go through the Gilbert system. My daughter was one receiving these awards. She's never had discipline issues, she's been a great student, she's now attending Chandler Gilbert Community College, pursuing nursing. Unfortunately, her senior year of high school, in 2013, her father and I separated. We'd been together since 1992, so this was really rough on her. Her father disappeared for a while and came back, and she ended up living with him. During that time, a friend, quote un, friend, talked her into shoplifting. So in February 2015, she was charged with shoplifting, which she didn't know, I mean, it completely devastated her world. What she thought, though, is that she would, you know, be able to do community service, pay whatever she needed to pay, do some counseling, get her life back on track, and do what she needed to do. Unfortunately, in Gilbert, there is no diversion program for first-time offenders. So she realized really quickly that this was gonna go on her record and remain on her record for the rest of her life, which, wanting to pursue nursing or any other degree, my degree is in education, school, counseling, you have to disclose that kind of stuff. This was devastating for her. So we hired an attorney, and for the last six months, we've been advocating with the prosecuting office to consider diversion. Gilbert's the only city that doesn't offer diversion for first-time offenders. Chandler, Tempe, Mesa, Phoenix, Scottsdale, all have wonderful diversion programs. I, for one, think that my daughter, along with all the other youth in Gilbert, and I've worked with a lot of the youth in Gilbert and in other surrounding cities, would benefit from diversion. Paying a fine and having it on your record for the rest of your life when it was a mistake just doesn't seem fair, it seems like punishment. Versus her having the opportunity to make things right and prove to the courts that she's an upstanding citizen, and restore that seems like it would make more of an impact, as well as having to do community service and counseling. From my understanding, the only person that was against it was the head prosecutor, most of the other prosecutors are in support of it. I've heard it in court, it sounds like a lot of the judges are in support of it. But for whatever reason, the head prosecutor was not. Since the head prosecutor's retired, and there's an interim, and my understanding is because it's an interim, it's been delayed again. So there's just, I feel like there's a lot of youth in Gilbert that are being affected by this, and in a negative way. And I even had a judge, one of the judges tell me in court that, or announce in court that, over the eight years he's been a judge, 800 youth, at minimum, he's had to put this on their record for life. So it's even affecting the judges and the prosecutors. I don't, I feel like there's a lot of support, but for whatever reason, we just keep, it's like falling on deaf ears. So I just wanted to address it with you in hopes that we can kind of move forward with this. My daughter has a court date tomorrow, time might not be in her favor. I hope that it is, because she's done a lot to try to advocate for this, but I don't know if they'll continue her case. But I really think that this is something that Gilbert should look at for the future.
Tiffany, thank you. As was mentioned in the Communication from Citizens, we're not really in a position, we're not allowed to comment on it, but I will say that your email with the details did arrive, and the council's looking at it, and it has been referred to the appropriate leadership already, and so we'll ask our leadership team to continue on with that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ray, any other requests?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the Consent Calendar, and Vice Mayor Ray, what request do we have on the Consent Calendar?
The only item we have is item number five. So with your permission, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
Mayor, I motion that we approve items 3A and B, item 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10A and B, 11A and B, and items 12 through 25, and for item 25, the revised notes that were placed in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. With that motion, second, please vote. Those who approve with a seven of all, thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, I was the one who polled item number five, and I'll ask our Director of Parks and Recreation, Rod, to give just a brief overview. My reason for pulling this is that there have been a great number of citizens that have had an interest in this specifically with the topic of cemetery, and so for the public to have a chance... And so for the public to have a chance to hear the update, I'll ask Rod to give a quick overview, and then we will proceed. Please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about this item tonight. Last month, I presented 12 different properties that were in the park inventory, and with recommended uses of those particular properties, some of those were to remove those from park use, future park use, and that was due to the fact that we recently acquired 225 acres at Chandler High Basin. The purpose of tonight's item is to obtain council support to issue the three solicitations for three town-owned parcels of land. One of them has to do with recreation, the other one's general use, and one is for cemetery. The one for recreation, we're seeking solicitations for use for the four acres at Crossroads Park as a vacant piece of property right now. The general use is the 14 and 6 acres across the street from Crossroads Park, and that would be for just a general use. We've had interest in all these pieces of property, and that's why we'd like to vet this out now. And then, now I'd like to get into the cemetery. Are there any questions on those two before I get into the cemetery? This will be another minute. Okay, so we, council received a presentation in May regarding a cemetery feasibility study. We, when we presented it, I asked council for direction to go out and study some sites. What we did was rather than hire a consultant, we did it internally. It was more of a high-level analysis, a fatal fall analysis, if you will. We looked at things like property size, estimated property value, proposed uses, and a couple of other criteria. Two pieces of property emerged that we could study further. And so what we'd like to do is to issue the RFP for solicitations on these two pieces of property to see what potential cemetery operators would like to tell us about these pieces of property, rather than go out and study them ourselves. So those are also the 14 and 6 acres at Crossroads, which is 20 acres. This site would allow us to have about 100 to 150-year build-out of demand. And then, as an alternate, the South Area Service Center has a piece of property just to the west of it, which is 38 acres. This particular site also came out high-ranking, and we'd like to use as an alternate, just in case we do get something that council wants to pursue at Crossroads. This started in May when we did the feasibility study and came all the way to September, which is what we heard tonight. The Parks Board did look at this and supported this recommendation. Our next steps will be to issue the solicitation, probably happen in October, evaluate the proposals in November, December, come back to the Parks Board and Council probably in The item, again, is a motion to support issuance of three solicitations, seeking proposals on these three vacant town properties, and there is no fiscal impact at this time. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. And to the council, I apologize. Since the study session, there was a request from a citizen in particular about this topic, and they wondered if they tuned in, if they could get the details and so forth. That particular citizen and others, Rod, thank you. To the council, in summary, we've got some land, and with land, we have three options. We use it, lease it, or sell it. And this is a request for us to allow Rod and team to at least have some ideas brought forward, and then we'll still have additional discussion on it in a few months. So I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve item number five.
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a seven of a vote. Thank you.
Mayor, point of order. Do we need to identify the revisions here with that?
When you did your original motion...
I didn't mention number five in the originals.
Oh, that's right.
As part of that motion, maybe we, I motion that we approve item five with the revisions as noted.
Second.
Thank you.
Proceed. We are, do we need to revote? Okay, proceed. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Taylor, thank you. We move to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Vice Mayor Ray, just on a preliminary basis, any council members that have asked to have topics discussed?
None, Mayor.
And then, do we have any requests from citizens?
We do not.
With that, I will open the public hearing on agenda items 26, 27, and 28, and I will close the public hearing on 26, 27, and 28, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve items 26, 27, and 28.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a seven of a vote. Thank you. We move to administrative items, boards, commissions, and committees, reports from town council members. Okay. We move to future meetings. And I think let's go to our report from the town manager on current items, and then we'll queue this up for the second part of this.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask Ken Morgan, Director of Public Works, to come up and talk to our citizens about an important public hearing that will be coming up regarding floodplain map revisions.
Thank you. Mayor Lewison, council. If I put them here, then I won't be able to read it. I'm holding in my hand a postcard that's going to be sent out to approximately 2,700 residences relative to the Flood Control District of Maricopa County is updating its flood insurance rate maps to go into effect November the 4th. Prior to it going into effect, there's going to be a public hearing in open house Tuesday, September the 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Southeast Regional Library in the Assembly Room. They will cover information relative to the revisions of the updated maps. Representatives there will be those from the Flood Control District of Maricopa County, FEMA, as well as the town itself. So residents that have received this are encouraged to bring the postcard and all questions that they have relative to the revised flood insurance rate maps will be answered.
Would you entertain a question right now, Ken? I guess I conduct the meeting therefore. Councilmember Taylor, please, your question.
We actually can't discuss it because it's not agendaized. I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
To our town attorney, as we're receiving information on a report from the town manager, is it okay to ask a question?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct, but only if you're asking for clarification of something that was said.
Okay.
Well, I'll ask a question, and if we can ask, if we can answer, great. If not, then maybe someone can send me some information. My question is, is the information that's going to be sent out going to include the updated flood map that we just heard recently with the AVIA project?
There is a website that is listed, but it says the information is more than likely going to be referenced at the website to the residents that receive the postcard. So it gives, it gives a website that they can access to identify the area, the areas of concern and question. And it, just further information, it says, if you have an insurable structure on your property, this change may affect your requirement for flood insurance, and we presented this information previously. There are some homes that may be coming out as a result of the updated revision, and there are some homes that may be going within the floodplain and may require the insurance. And so the meeting is going to really capture the discussion that focused in around which residences may be required or which residences may no longer be required as well.
Mayor, if I may ask a follow-up? That may or may not be answered. Is there an effective date on the map? You know, because those are being updated on a regular basis. So what is the...
November 4th, 2015.
So that's prospective. Okay. All right, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Continue? Orders finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ken, thank you. Town Manager Banjer, anything else to add to that?
There will also be an article running in the Arizona public, my understanding is tomorrow, that will highlight this issue for the residents. I'd like to recognize Dana Birchman and her digital communications team for, they won an award at the Public Relations Society of America's Phoenix Chapter last Thursday, their annual awards. They are recognized for the digital state of the town. And then Dan Henderson and his economic development team were also recognized for production they put on. And that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll do my part on the mayor's part. Report from council on current events. Councilmember Kurt.
Mayor, you may, even Patrick may remember, maybe a couple of months ago, we attended a service shortly after the Supreme Court ruling, and this wasn't even planned because Jenny and I felt that we could attend the Presbyterian service in sign of unity of our community. And then all of a sudden, I saw the mayor and Patrick there as well. I said, well, maybe great minds might think alike, but I wasn't sure if you fit in that category, Patrick, but anyways. But anyways, I did have the opportunity to sit at the Faith Summit with Pastor Reed and his wife at their table. And his wife shared with me a letter that she and her husband received shortly after that service. And I want to read this because it's something that I think it really reflects, you know, our community here in Gilbert. So this is a letter from one of their members from the congregation, and it's really short. "Yesterday, Sunday, was a red letter day for me. I didn't even remember a day I left church feeling quite like I did after that service. In that plain Austria band room," and again, this was held at the elementary school over at Gilbert Elementary, "was almost filled to capacity. A miracle was taking place. Every chair was occupied with an untimely and probable group of people. There were unexpected guests, members, friends, Mormons, Catholics, Presbyterians, and perhaps even atheists or unbelievers. There were winners and there were losers. Some came regularly, some were just curious, some involved in litigation, and the losers who requested to be there. This had to be a humbling request. The thing that was not there was attention, discomfort, resentment, and anger, which could have been present in a meeting like this. The friendliness and greetings soon dispensed with any of that, and everyone seemed to be at ease. The opening remarks by the winning attorney were genuine and void of any sign of gloating over the victory. The glory went to God, and the benefits went to all Christians in all faiths. The mayor's response was brief, humble, and tactful, with no hint of revenge or bitterness. Pastor Reed's sermon was carefully selected with no hint of boasting or malice, but a common theme on communion and a grateful spirit for the victory. The beautiful part was a great display of the openness and absence of any exclusion to our church alone. The participation of all that were present, of all that were singing responses and prayers, and any other ritual was for everyone, and they did participate, which must have been pleasing to God." So I just wanted to share this because I felt like, as we were there, Mayor, it was about our community and just being united together, so.
Thank you. Team one, which you talk to us about all the time. I like that. Anything else from council members? So the last item, report from the mayor, is a continuation, and if any of you needed to depart, but the last item, as our town manager was mentioning, our digital Gilbert team received some recognition, but also our town manager did. And so the prestigious Phoenix Award from the Public Relations Society of America was given to Town Manager Patrick Banjer, honored for supporting and elevating the best practices of public relations. There is a video. It's eight minutes in length, so we're going, we're shifting a little bit into it, and we'll watch a little bit of it, and give a big round of applause to our town manager for receiving this prestigious award, and then we'll end. So Kurt, please.
When it comes to digital government, he's paving the way. The White House just hired their first chief digital officer in April. Patrick did it three years ago. He keeps us all laughing with his terrific sense of humor and his warm kindness and passion for what he does makes it a joy for all of us in the organization to come to work each day. It's an absolute honor to present Patrick Banjer with this year's Phoenix Award.
It's an honor to be here and recognize how we receive this recognition from you for what we've done in Gilbert. So let me start. I remember Dana told me she was very excited that she had heard that I was going to receive the award this year for what we've done in Gilbert and our department, Dan and her team have done in Gilbert. But she had told me some of the past awards that happened, and we are still relatively new to this region, four years this August. And so I came home and I told my wife about that I'm going to get this award, and it's very prestigious and I feel very honored. And I told her some of the people that won in the past, Eric Hall, Jerry Colangelo. She looked at me, she knew who said it. And I was expecting like, wow, that was awesome. She said, who said?
I'd like to continue, but I don't want our town manager to get too big of a head, but I, in representing the council and the Gilbert community, congratulations. I'll just give you an assignment, the full eight minutes. We want to make sure that your mom gets to watch all eight minutes. Can you accept that assignment? Thank you all to your attendance. Summary again, tomorrow, the 9/11 Remembrance Event, 7:00 PM here at Town Hall, and next week, we invite you to come to the Constitution Week Events. Meeting adjourned.